Excuse me, not B three, B two, my bad.
Right, so subdivision of two lots just under nineteen acres and then rezone from R one and B one and B two to all combo. Uh, or all, um, one B two.
That's correct.
All, all as a, um, okay. Well, there's ten listed conditions, you're in agreement with those?
Yes.
And then the, uh, findings of fact for the commission, um, any questions from commissioners?
Uh, just a point of information for the commissioners and applicant on the right of way that's to be vacated, we're reviewing that now. Uh, there does appear to be some drainage in there and we're gonna have to make a determination whether or not, you know, your, your, uh, applicant's gonna actually inherit that drainage, not just an easement, he may inherit the pipe that has not got any, uh, city drainage going through it.
Okay. So that's gonna become private drainage?
It, it could be, we hadn't gotten to that point yet to just see exactly what all is going in there. Uh, at, at a minimum, it's gonna be a, a, an easement, it's gonna have to be retained, typical.
I expected that.
But it is possible that, that the system is gonna become his as well, we just don't know exactly where, exactly how it's all connected.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners on this application? Is anyone else here in the audience to speak for this agenda item at thirty-three hundred Knollwood Drive and thirty-four oh one and thirty-four twenty-one Medical Park Drive? The Knollwood Place subdivision. Anyone here to speak against it or have questions on it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Um, this is an ex- is extension of an application. A dual application of a subdivision at fifty-four hundred Hamilton Boulevard and then a P U D. At the same location, the S. Feller Industrial Park subdivision. Uh, is the applicant present? Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
Bruce Smith, four fifty-seven St. Michael Street. Uh, we're just requesting a one-year extension for the subdivision put so that we can finish the conditions that were set forth to finish the land disturbance requirements, um, making good progress, just need a little more time so we can finish those up and get the subdivision recorded.
Question for staff, is there a specific timeframe on this extension request?
The extension would be good for one year.
Got it, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Since it's on the agenda, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak for this application of extension? Anyone here to speak against it? All right. We'll move on to the new agenda items or, or new items, um, for the planning commission to consider. Number six, this is a subdivision at fifty Common Street, the Parker's Common subdivision. It's a one lot, uh, at a quarter of an acre. Applicant's present, Mr. Bird, there are eight listed conditions. If you're in agreement with those and any, any further comments?
I'd like to revise number two, that's about the street radiuses. Um, we have had some conversations with city engineering department, would like to revise number two to be provide a radius at the intersections that deemed necessary by city engineering department. Not necessarily make it a requirement, there be a radius there.
I'll defer to our commissioner, Mr. Amberger.
Yeah, I believe the recommendation says, says just that, unless a smaller radius is approved.
Dedication sufficient to provide twenty-five foot corner radii. At the intersections of Carolina and Common in compliance with sixty-six of the sub regs unless a smaller radius is approved by, so that, that's the way it reads.
Well, it says with radius, but of course, we'd like to eliminate the radius since all the utilities are in place, sidewalks in place, curb gutters in place. Um, radius are not really necessary.
Well, and I think, let me, let me address that, cause this, this comes up on, on numerous occasions, especially in the downtown area. That is generally a standard note to, to meet a city standard of a twenty-five foot radius. We've had discussions that we leave that in there and I know we have to keep revisiting it because there could be those occurrences where we need to do it. Uh, and almost, in most situations, we do waive it, we don't require, we don't make a change, but if we've got a scenario where we hypothetically have an oak tree or a power pole or, or that one off of something and we need to go through that process. Uh, I've just discussed with my staff that it's better that it's in here and we, uh, we modify it every time if needed than to take it off and, and we miss it one time, cause if we miss it one time, we never have the ability to come back in and clean it up at a later date. Uh, so that's the reason you keep seeing it over and over and over, and I would just ask that we, you know, you work, you work with the, the staff on, on doing it. And if there's nothing there and there's not a conflict, we're gonna actually leave it just like it is, but when we get down into the weeds and we see that trucks are driving over it or there's some other, something else in that built environment where we need a little bigger piece, you know, mainly to accommodate the sidewalk. That's the main thing we're, we're, we're trying to make sure fits, that's generally the only time we're gonna ask, ask for it to actually be dedicated.
Well, we can look at it on the ground, see if there's a problem with cars going around and jumping the curb and.
Setback in this part of Mobile. Okay.
Any further comments or questions from commissioners? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to agenda item number eight. Twenty-two oh-eight Fairway Drive, the Daly Pollard subdivision. Subdivision of one lot and a quarter acre. There are ten conditions listed. I'll ask if you're in agreement with those. And any other questions or comments? Name and address for the record into the microphone.
My name's Patrick C. with Person Services, forty-four seventy-four Halls Mill Road. No issues with the conditions?
No issues with the conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to number nine. This is a subdivision. Two fifty Dogwood Lane, Gilliard Oaks subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot Four. Is the applicant, and this is a subdivision of one lot at about a third of an acre. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the seven listed conditions? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item at two fifty Dogwood Lane? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, seeing none. We will move on. Agenda item number ten. It's a subdivision at four thirty-one Azalea Road. West Mobile Masonic Temple subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot One. Proposal of two lots at one point eight-five acres. Applicant appears to be present. Your name and address for the record. And also, sir, there are nine listed conditions. I'll ask for your agreement or any questions or comments towards those.
Yes, I'm Newton Cromer, seven-two-four-one Pine Court in Saraland. I am representing the West Mobile Masonic Temple. And we are in agreement with the conditions provided by staff.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on condition number three.
Yes.
We note that provision of twenty-five foot minimum front yard setback for both lots. However, in the staff report, we noted that for Lot Two, since it doesn't have street frontage, that that front setback should not be required.
So that would be a strike of number three?
Just say for Lot One only.
Uh, thank you. So, Mr. Cromer, what he just said was only Lot One will have a twenty-five front yard setback.
Because it's road frontage, yes, sir. The rest of it's D. ingress and egress to Lot Two.
So you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Number ten, four thirty-one Azalea Road. Anyone here to speak against it? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number eleven is a dual application at fifty-five oh-one. Can't even read it because it's got a big number, a big withdrawn written across of it. Just to confirm, this application has been or will be withdrawn? That's correct. So number eleven is a withdrawal. Final agenda item, dual application, subdivision and rezone. South side of Ziegler Boulevard, west of Ziegler Circle West, extending south to the north termini of Avenue A, Fifth Avenue and Harding Boulevard. This is the Cypress Place subdivision. Two hundred and nine lots, eighty, over eighty-one acres. And request on the rezone from single-family R-one and community business suburban B-three to all single-family R-one. Applicant appears to be present. Your name and address for the record. And then on the conditions for the subdivision, there's thirteen listed. And then for planning commission consideration, we have seven findings of fact and three listed conditions on the rezone. Go ahead.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. Evan Gertz with DDG, three-seven-zero-three Old Shell Road here in Mobile. And here to answer any questions you might have about this requested subdivision and rezoning. I do have two or three questions or potential revisions on the conditions for the subdivision under condition number six. I would, I would ask that perhaps that condition be revised to read that the plat is revised with the right-of-way for Holly Lane, as in will extend the right-of-way to the adjacent parcel, such that parcel is no longer landlocked. Right now, it just reads that we'll extend Holly Avenue. I believe the intent's the same. Our, our client intends to maintain access for that owner through whatever phases of development happen. No issue with that. I'm just asking that be revised to read right-of-way instead of extension of Holly Lane. And then through, for item number seven. I would ask consideration, as we're working through city engineering with access to the south side of the property, that while we're going through this commission approval, we consider adding Fairway Avenue and Harding Boulevard as waivers to that section of... As waivers from that section of the ordinance. So that we can work through that south side access with city engineering. And then on the rezoning, condition number one is really more of a question. It indicates that the condition should be completion of the subdivision process. And our question just would be, at what point would the rezoning be complete? As rezoning is going to continue on to city council. And then the subdivision really is, will not be complete until all improvements are constructed and the final plat's approved. So at what point is the rezoning finalized?
I will take these questions in reverse order. And I'll defer to staff on that last question with respect to the process.
So the rezoning process, you can go ahead and move forward with that if it's recommended for approval by the planning commission. The actual rezoning won't be applicable to the property until a subdivision plat has been required for the property to make it a legal lot and eliminate all the split zoning on the property.
Okay, is there a timeline associated between the council approving of the rezoning and the necessary completion and recordation of the final plat?
Well, if the planning commission approves the plat, it has a one-year lifespan. And it will probably take you a while, of course, to build all the streets. So you might need to apply for an extension of approval. But once the city council has made their decision, in this case perhaps approving the rezoning, that is in place. So it does not need to be renewed.
Thank you. We're in agreement with all three rezoning conditions with that clarification.
Okay, on the rezon, you're, you're good to go there.
The street names that you listed, I'm just trying to make sure.
Going back to number seven on the subdivision?
Yeah, I'll take, you, I'll be go to number six with you. If you look in the center of the property, this, this, there's a part mark, not a part. There's a, there's a, essentially a landlocked parcel that exists there now. There's, I guess, what you would call a prescriptive access easement, as they have access across the adjacent property, but there's nothing in the record. And so what we're proposing is as we subdivide this and dedicate right-of-ways, the street that is nearest to that is what we're proposing, is Holly Lane. It's the one that goes north-south. And so we intend to allow access to that property per the condition, whether that be via access easement or an extension of Holly Lane. I guess what, what we're asking is, we may, it may be beneficial to the property owner to not build Holly Lane any closer to their property. They may, they may want to access from the end of Holly Lane. We're happy to push, to dedicate the rest of that as right-of-way so that their property line adjoins city right-of-way. We would just like the condition to read that will extend the Holly Lane right-of-way there. The actual limits of the street construction to be determined. You know, we, we want to do, we want to provide access for that property in a way that makes sense for them.
Uh, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Um, so just, just for clarification at the moment, the way this is all drawn out, you're coming in off of Ziegler, through the parcel that you're seeking a rezon. Then you get further down, and we're talking about Holly, Holly Lane at the moment. So that, that will not connect, just for clarification, that will not connect to Fairway Avenue?
So that is, that's correct. In our additional comments and communication with staff, we are requesting the flexibility to continually evaluating that access connection. Our client's preference is that we do not provide open, full access at Harding and Fairway Avenue on the south side of the property. We're trying to work through the logistics of having a gated, emergency-only secondary access there.
So, and just for clarification for your client, what your client's understanding or your client's request is, is the only way in or out at the moment is off of Ziegler Boulevard?
Except for emergency vehicles.
Okay, which we're up in question, that you just said we're looking at potentially expanding there, making that a gate, I guess.
I'm sorry?
Uh, potentially, that could be a gate, or that could be something, you know, but right now, there's, there's no access to Fairway, I guess.
Correct. We would prefer that that, well, as it's shown on the plat right now, we have a right-of-way extended there, where we would like to gate that access, but we need to work through that with staff, if that is acceptable under the code or how we would accomplish that. It is our desire to have an emergency access there as a secondary access for that neighborhood.
And I, I think, I mean, what is fire code on that? On staff?
This, the city of Mobile has not adopted Appendix D of the fire code. And so the secondary access is not required based on coordination with fire. But we would like to have, just for many reasons, right? If there was a lot of roadwork happening on Ziegler in the future, the opportunity to have that temporarily opened for access. Or if there is an accident or some emergency need, to have a secondary access that has, you know, for example, Knox Fire Access at a gate, would be favorable to the community.
Councilman Woods, I believe actually that the fire department has adopted portions of Appendix D, but the requirement for two points of access to a residential subdivision, I think even at the state level, that was waived as a mandatory requirement. And that has also been applicable here in Mobile as to not require two points of access for fire.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And my question, I know we had one applicant on a different subdivision brought before us, the idea or the concept of gating something that opens to everybody. If it was keypad gated, well, then it becomes a private street. But if the gate opened to everyone, then it can be gated, and it would, it would be allowed. I'm just, I'm throwing that out that that was what, if you were thinking about some sort of gate, I think that's where you end up with. It's a gate, it's not necessarily a Knox box gate, but it's a gate that opens to all traffic potentially. Am I, am I, am I correct on that, or is that, we still don't have a final ruling or guidance on that one?
Well, as it relates to this application, I don't think that staff was under the understanding that a gate was being considered for the connecting point here. So condition number seven was specifically to waive any sort of cul-de-sac requirement for Fifth Avenue and Avenue A, perhaps, where they abut the other part of the property.
Okay. So one more question for you then. So are we correct in hearing, there's no codes that have been adopted that require that secondary access yet? Okay.
And then back to the applicant's request on seven, to include Avenue A and Fifth, and then also to include Harding and Fairway. Was it that your, your request?
Well, and the reason for that is that I believe that if, there was some talk from staff that we may not be allowed to gate across what we would have as Holly Lane if that were a public right-of-way. So we may have to revise a portion of that or stop the right-of-way short of the, of our current property line of Fairway Avenue, in which case the same waiver that is listed as a condition for Avenue B and Fifth Avenue would be necessary for the end of Harding Boulevard and Fairway Avenue as well. And so my request, or our request, is really just to add those two street names. And if we need to add to that condition, you know, as coordinated with city staff for gating of Holly Avenue, that would be great. I would just, just trying to have a little foresight on solving the gate issue and that if we did gate that, it might require the same waiver for those other two streets.
And one more, one more question for the staff on that Part A, that little out, that little internal out parcel. It looks like it's surrounded completely by either private lots or common areas. Should, should a right-of-way, should, should a public right-of-way not go all the way to it?
That's what he's discussing for condition number seven.
Okay, okay, maybe I was hearing it, hearing it wrong.
And also note that where Fairway and Harding come to the property, they are in a point, and it is paved in that area. So you can drive from one street to the other street without having to go onto the applicant's property. So I don't know if a cul-de-sac requirement would be triggered at that point.
I, I'm looking at, looking at the proposed plat that's up there. Again, it's, I don't see where any public right-of-way touches that lot, but that's what you're... Yes. Okay.
Yeah, it is. It's the Hammerhead Street directly below, not a park. And so, yeah, condition, one of these conditions reads that we would extend Holly Lane to that. I'm asking that it, I'm asking that it be revised to say we would extend the right-of-way of Holly Lane or provide an easement, to say.
Yeah. I think, I think it's going to be the right-of-way.
We're in full agreement. We, we're going to provide access to that lot through all phases and, and permanent configuration.
And one more question, if you don't mind. Uh, I guess for staff, so what we're saying on number seven is that we're going to waive the, we're not going to mandate a cul-de-sac for Fifth Avenue, and I guess Avenue A is that...
Right, I believe Fifth Avenue is paved and in use with a mix of business and residential uses on there. But in order to provide the cul-de-sac, the applicant would have to provide it on their property.
Yeah.
Which would take out some of the lots.
Yeah.
And then Avenue A, I don't think is improved. While it exists in right-of-way form, there is no actual pavement on Avenue A up to the property line.
So, um, should a, a vehicle, let's say the largest fire truck that the city has, needs to go down Fifth Avenue, how do we, there's not a cul-de-sac requirement?
Well, right now, it has to back up. So any, even the garbage truck would have to back out of the street as it does now.
Okay, and just a waiver, I mean, I guess the, your recommendation for that is based on just, uh, I guess what you're saying is that they just have to, they'll just have to do it, I guess?
Well, it's not, it's not fair to require them to take, to build the cul-de-sac on their property when it's not benefiting them.
What about if they were to do a hammerhead there? Come in and do a hammerhead?
Still would have to take part of their property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Didn't we just have a, a street somewhere out there where we were trying to make them put a hammerhead on somebody?
It was a B. have property, I believe.
It was, it was the one on Moffett Road that... Did we make them build a hammerhead?
No, you voted against that one.
I'm just saying.
Any further comments or commissioner questions? Does everybody have their notes on condition six and seven on the subdivision? And then back to the conditions on the rezon, applicant is in agreement after discussion with staff. I'll ask if there's anybody else in the audience that is here to speak for this agenda item on Ziegler Boulevard? Is there one here to speak against it? Or have questions for it? Yes, ma'am? Please come to the, if you have a question or just want to make a comment. And your name and address for the record. And pull the microphone down a little bit.
Ratziella Machino, I own a lot on Sixth Avenue and Avenue C. And it's hard to make out that map from over there. And I'm wondering if this is going to be bordering my backyard? And how are these people going to get in and out? It looks pretty landlocked.
Based on the map that I have on the screen, Chairman, Sixth Avenue does not touch the siding question. So it's just a few, maybe up to a hundred feet away from the actual property that's under consideration today.
Does that answer your question?
My question is, how are they going to form some type of exits to leave there and to this property? I mean, it's really...
The primary entrance is listed off, coming off of Ziegler Boulevard?
That just happened to be on the dead end of one of the Avenue Cs. I was just curious, how they're going to be using that Avenue C to get in and out or eventually use it for emergency purposes? I'm thinking ambulances, fire trucks, things like that, how are they going to get? So I'm just wondering how the traffic and the environment is going to be once all this stuff is done.
What, what we have in front of us doesn't show it connecting to Avenue C in any way. What we have in front of us doesn't have it connecting to Avenue C in any way.
Wait and see. That's my, that, that was my concern and my question. How, is this going to affect the environment? I mean, it's pretty wooded in, and how are those people going to get in and out there?
Well, the, the applicant went through all of the, the processes and, and their procedures to conform with, with staff and the recommendations.
Right, that was it. That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is anyone else in the audience here to speak against this application or have questions towards it? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing session and go back in our agenda items. So number one, for deliberation, holdover subdivision at thirty-seven sixty-eight Springhill Avenue. Subdivision of two lots, over five, just over five acres, nine conditions listed. Applicant, Mr. Cummings, was present. And in agreement.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion for subdivision passes. Agenda item number two has been withdrawn at fifty-six seventy-two Commerce Boulevard West. The applicant, Mr. Burge, was present or in representation of them in agreement. Application number three, agenda item number three, is a dual application subdivision and rezon at fifty-six thirty-two and fifty-five seventy-two Commerce Boulevard West, requested for holdover until June twentieth.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for holdover. Number four, dual application, we'll take them separately. It's a subdivision at thirty-three hundred Knollwood Drive, thirty-four oh-one and thirty-four twenty-one Medical Park Drive, and then a rezon going to all B-two. We'll take them separately on the subdivision. Applicant was present and in agreement with the ten listed conditions.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On the rezon, we have seven findings of fact for consideration and the three listed conditions that the applicant was agreement, agreeing to.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A through G. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number five is a request for extension at fifty-four hundred Hamilton Boulevard, the S. Feller Industrial Park subdivision. The applicant was present for this dual application. The extension would apply to both subdivision and PUD. This would be for a one-year period.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for extension is passed. New agenda item number six, subdivision at fifty Common Street. One lot at a quarter acre. Eight listed conditions. There was discussion on number two. Applicant wasn't, is present and in agreement on those eight listed conditions with discussion on number two.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations, modifying number two.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision at fifty Common Street passes. Number seven, twenty-sixty-six Andrews Street, Chaney Edition subdivision, one lot, five and a quarter, five and a third acre. Applicant is present, eight listed conditions, in agreement with those eight listed conditions.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask commissioner a question? We, we entertain waiving the right-of-way dedication and just allowing the reduced setback?
I would move to amend my motion to waive that requirement.
Second.
amended motion, properly moved and seconded. Everybody hear it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for subdivision passes. Number eight, twenty-two oh-eight Fairway Drive, Daly Pollard subdivision, one lot, quarter acre, ten listed conditions. Applicant is present and in agreement.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision passes. Number nine, two fifty Dogwood Lane subdivision. Of one lot, third of an acre. Applicant is present and in agreement with the seven listed conditions.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for subdivision passes. Number ten, four thirty-one Azalea Road, West Mobile Masonic Temple subdivision. Two lots, one point eight-five acres. Applicant, Mr. Cromer, is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions. Revision to number three, suggestion to go to read only Lot One.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations, amending item number three to read Lot One only instead of both lots.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for subdivision passes. Number eleven on the application is withdrawn. Number twelve. We'll take them separately. This is the subdivision, south side of Ziegler Boulevard. Cypress Place subdivision. The applicant is present. Thirteen listed conditions. We had discussion on number six of the conditions, and then number seven of the conditions. Entertaining motion.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations with, with regards to item number six requiring the, the extension of the right-of-way in lieu of the cross-access easement. I don't believe there were any, any, any changes to seven.
I think they were. Well, any questions on number six?
Um, I guess, so, so what's on the table here is that we're going to allow a, we're going to allow a gate of some sort or, or a barrier of some sort between the two hundred and some odd houses, which Mobile drastically needs or very much needs. We're going to allow a gate of some sort. I guess, is that, that's what on, what's on the table, I guess?
He mentioned that it, we're fair, at the bottom of the plat, we're Fairway tied into Holly, intersects or joins the property, that they are considering putting an emergency gate there for fire trucks and ambulances. And I think there have been several of those around the city already. So that access would not be open on a day-to-day basis to the general public or to the residents.
Yes.
But really, your decision is not, before y'all is not whether or not we allow them to build a gate. It's just, they don't want, they don't want to have to, they want to leave that right-of-way open for that purpose. Without restricting their access to Fairview Avenue, is that a fair way to say?
And also before that, is there a way to put a condition on it upon approval of the fire department, I guess? Or is there somebody at the fire department that we can, can sign off on that?
I think fire department traffic injury and injury review will be required for any proposed gate. So it's not an automatic approval.
If this is an issue that, that they see arises, then they can address it at review, I guess. Okay, and we're not, we're not handcuffing them per se.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
The thought is they'll, they'll probably end up like a large apartment complex that has a gate with a Knox box on it that the fire department can access. That's probably where they plan, but we'll have to let them submit what they want to submit.
Now that we've had that conversation, I think I should say, I can express it a different way. He wants, I believe, correct me, he wants seven, I'm sorry, six to include, I'm sorry, seven to include...
Fairway Avenue?
If, in Bert's, in Bert's opinion, in Bert's opinion, that he expresses now, Harding Boulevard and Fairway Avenue pavement are connected. So I don't think that we need any modifications to seven if staff's in agreement. But if, if you could foresee a condition where that would be a problem, and a, and a, a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac would be required, then we would ask that those two streets be added to the condition.
Yeah, again, condition number seven is requiring the provision of a cul-de-sac or turnaround.
Yeah.
And since these two streets connect such that a vehicle can travel around without having to do a turnaround, I don't know that they should be listed.
Yeah, so we should leave seven as is then?
I agree.
Leave seven as is, and then, as, as I stated earlier, require the, the right-of-way to extend, uh, to the, to the internal parcel.
We're just asking to insert behind the word Holly Lane, insert right-of-way. That's the request.
I'll second the motion made by the city engineer.
We have a, on the subdivision, we have a properly moved and seconded motion. I'll ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the motion for the subdivision passes. And on the rezone, applicant, um, after discussion, was in agreement with the three listed conditions, and planning commission has seven findings of fact for consideration.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations with findings of fact, A through G.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion for rezone passes. That concludes the agenda items for today. We have a handwritten other business item from Mr. Anderson. I'll turn it over, turn it over to you.
Thank you, just one, uh, brief comment or announcement. Uh, last meeting, which I was absent, I apologize. Y'all denied the application for a subdivision on Moffett, the Hive or the Beehive, whatever it's called. Uh, the owner, the applicant has hired an attorney and filed, appealed it to circuit court. So we'll be handling that in circuit court.
Thank you for the update. Any further business items for today?